Good morning, everyone. We are going to start the webinar in two minutes.
The meeting to order this morning on January 24th at 11:20. Sorry for our late start this morning, everyone. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like to ask our board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I'm Teri Lucas, the board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs, which the link can be found on our website, For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, will you please call the board?
Hildegard Aguinaldo. Darius Anderson. Amy Costa.
Here.
Joshua Elizondo.
Here.
Kevin Hall. Lieutenant Governor Elaine Kounalakis.
Present.
And present, sorry, it's Kevin Hall, present.
Thank you, Kevin.
Apologies.
Paul Medina. Jennifer Perry. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Alicia Escobar Carrillo.
Here.
Dorina Grande. Pamela Haynes. Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Roy Shabazian.
Here.
Valerie Shaw. Lost Villa Lobos.
Here.
Joseph Williams. And Paul Medina.
Present.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
President Costa. Great, thank you. I know we have some other members who will be joining us a little bit later, and as they do, we'll call that out for you to the board liaison.
Madam Chair, Darius Anderson just joined.
Great, thank you. Can you please note that Board Member Anderson is with us as well? Now with that, we'd like to proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask trustee Elizondo to please read us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item, 1.3, is discussion of the order of the agenda. Do any of the board members have any requests on the order of the agenda before us this morning? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to myself, I guess, for the report. I'll keep it brief. I will just say, yesterday, when I was providing over our Board of Governors meeting, I noted, you know, that we had a mass shooting in California and Monterey Park. And before we even ended our meeting, we had another one at Half Moon Bay, much closer to my home. And I also read where there was group shooting in Oakland. And, you know, yesterday I said, and now I kind of commiserated with some of my colleagues, and I know California actually has some of the most progressive laws. And, you know, there've been some court issues. But my hope is, and I know some of the policymakers across the street have already kind of made public comments about pursuing other policies, but this just got to stop. I mean, it's just absolutely unconscionable in my mind that people cannot live their daily lives without fearing for their safety. Yeah, the fact that my own children, my three children, have all been involved in active shooting drills at their school is really a sad statement of where we are as a society, frankly. I had earthquake dwells and all of that. The fact that we have to teach our kids to run and protect themselves from violence at their school, and that we cannot really give them assurances that they're safe even in public is really a damning condemnation of our society as a whole. Sorry, it couldn't be on a more pleasant note, but I think it's something that we all need to think about and do our parts to change. With that, I will turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you, President Costa. I appreciate the perspectives. Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. Change tone a little bit and wish us all a Happy New Year. And I hope that each of you had a wonderful holiday season with family. As we reflect on the past 12 months and our vision for the future, I'm actually reminded of the words of William Blake, who said, "What is now proved was only once imagined." Every new year brings with us, with the cliche of restarting and beginning anew. But here at Calbright, our intent is actually to keep building on the success of 2022 and to continue to accelerate toward the end of the fiscal year. This year, we continue to complete key recommendations by the state auditor and remain on track for those that have multi-year deadlines. We also more than doubled our enrollments, as well as the number of certificates awarded compared to 2021. We're approaching a student body of 2,000 students and are positioned to award our 200th certificate later this month. But more importantly than even that is that we are doing so by effectively reaching the populations and the communities that we were built to serve. Our student engagement metrics continue to increase as we test and refine and improve. Time to completion for our students was cut in half this year, and we have now seen multiple quarters in which our student persistence rate exceeds 90%. There is more to do, and there will always be more to do, but this is exceptional progress that reflects Calbright's role as the leading edge of the learning curve for serving non-traditional learners and for building a new model of education within the higher education sector. We immerse ourselves in this effort. So sometimes it's really important for us to take a step back and to remember the greater context in which we commit ourselves to this work. Across the California community college system, students who are 25 years or older have a 5% three-year completion rate for Chancellors' Office-approved certificate programs. For associates degrees, that number is even, that percentage is even lower. And this is especially acute for students of color and those from underrepresented communities in higher education. Amidst a period in which California community colleges experienced a 300,000 drop in the number of students, non-traditional learners left some of the highest rates. These statistics are sobering, and they're also actually in line with what we see in terms of national averages. They also tell a story of this moment and the reality that our learners are confronting across the country and in California. The harsh reality that the conventional way of doing things isn't set up to serve adult learners well. Rarely are non-traditional students the recipients of data-driven, outcome-focused endeavors to nurture their success. Rarely do efforts focus first from the perspective of the adult learner and apply the best of what can be learned when we actively listen and observe, build and test academic and support solutions with equity community needs, et cetera. It's in this context that we shine a bright light that's important to celebrate. Calbright's accomplishments and the success of our students actually remind us of what is possible when we recognize and respond to the realities that our learners face in a fast-paced economy. The new year also brings with it the state's next budget cycle. Again, we are extraordinarily thankful for the support in the governor's budget and excited to see our efforts aligned with the core priorities of the state that are focused on supporting economic and workforce outcomes, particularly in key regions of the state. And again, despite progress, we expect a vocal minority to create political headwings for us. But our work and progress demonstrate the deep need we have as a state to place greater emphasis and support and focus on supporting adult learners. And the purpose of our model of education is to build it around their needs. We're seeing growth as a college relative to other institutions. Our 5X growth over the past two academic years is actually precisely because our focused efforts to effectively reach and support learners otherwise left behind. And our student persistence rate is nearly double the system-wide average for our community of learners. Despite that undeniable progress, I think it's especially been disheartening has been the misleading arguments against Calbright and the effect that they have in trying to discredit our students who are making this very vulnerable choice to come back to education, who come to us committed, excited to learn, and making the challenging effort to fit their studies into a day that is likely already maxed out with childcare, elder care, working. To remember at a time when the system-wide, in system-wide, we see the completion rate for non-traditional students around 5%, Calbright is often asked to meet a standard that seems to apply nowhere else. A standard that carries no consideration for our seven-year startup period, no room for learning and improvement, which are the essential conditions for actually meeting the needs of our learners in these difficult times that students find themselves in. No room for understanding that enrollment won't return to pre-pandemic levels, and intractably low completion rates won't rise if higher education continues with business as usual. Unlike other areas and many other areas of higher, we're seeing real progress and momentum at Calbright when it comes to serving our community of learners. Our funding, relatively, it's nominal compared to what's being spent across the system, yet we still have aggressive naysayers and opponents who spread misinformation in an attempt to devalue our students. And this is essential work for the communities that are too often forgotten. This baffling cycle commands significant time as we work twice as hard to meet a barrage of requests while also supporting our students and continuing to build this college. No other community college is asked to do this. But today, you'll see this progress in our meeting and on future agendas as we stay focused on our mission and the mandates outlined in our founding legislation. We're very excited to share with you research this morning regarding new programs and their opportunity to support adults across the state. I'm also thrilled to seek your approval for several new candidates as we continue to build the team that will drive our growth and success. And we know, and now we can show, that when we have provided the space and opportunity to build, we have the ability to make fast and consistent progress. And I look forward to continue to share that progress with you each month as we work together to tackle equity and strength in outcomes across our community college system. And a special thanks to President Costa. This now concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I'd like to note for the board liaison that we have Board Member Haynes with us. With that, the board will now move into closed session. We have two items on our agenda, and we expect we'll be back from closed session in about 30 minutes. Thank you so much.
Closed session is in the same room as yesterday. Now we go around the corner.
Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. The board did not take any action in closed session that is reportable. With that, I'm going to move on to our consent agenda, which is in section three of today's agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for discussion or a separate vote? I am not seeing any. With that, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. With that, colleagues, I am open to taking the motion to approach the aims with the motion at the time of the second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Garyus Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis. Paul Medina. Josh Elizondo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa. Felicia. Jelena Grande. Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw. Los Villa Lobos.
Yes.
Joseph Williams. We have a motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we're going to move into
So, I'm sorry, this is Felicia Escobar Correa. I'm sorry, I did not, I could not get myself off mute. I just wanted to note, I am also, yes.
Great. Board member or trustee Medina, excuse me, my brachial rig, we just voted on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Would you like to officially log your vote?
That's an either something for
Okay.
As a whole.
Great. And that will be noted by the liaison. Next up, in our action agenda portion, we have item 4.1. We have a new general counsel, LaTitia Ramirez presenting.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo and members of the board. For the record, this is a piece of our meeting as general counsel. This is my first meeting and forward, and I'm very excited to be here. So now onto the business at hand. Before you can today is an item seeking approval of an amendment to a legal services agreement of the law from Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost, known as F3. The proposed amendment would retroactively extend the term of the agreement from June 30th, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. Approving this amendment would ratify past punitive invoices under the contract which expired in June 2020. It would allow the college to continue to receive legal services from F3 for the remainder of this fiscal year as I evaluate the college's legal claims. Request for proposals for out of the people council services this spring. I'll start with some background on the agreement. F3 was selected as out of council following a competitive selection process in our process conducted by the chancellor's office and the foundation for California community colleges in 2018. The RFP solicited legal services to advise and support the formation and operation of CalBRA. Following that process, CalBRA and F3 executed a two-year legal services agreement in August of 2018. Since then, F3 has served as the main legal advisor to the college. I want to note that the agreement contained hourly rates for associates and partners, however, it does not specify a not to exceed the total or annual amount. F3 has provided general counsel and specialized legal services to CalBRA. They advised on a range of novel and complex legal matters relating to procurement, employment, and partnerships. Addresses addressing these matters requires in-depth research, original drafting, and cross-functional collaboration with all aspects of the college. F3 has been a key partner in advancing and meeting the timelines and goals in CalBRA's strategic vision plan. And expenditures for legal services for past four fiscal years have totaled about $2 million. Now, I'll talk about why this item is for the board. We're here because in October of 2022, CalBRA identified that the term of F3's agreement had expired and had not been formally extended by board action. As the board is aware, since 2021, CalBRA has been diligent in enhancing its procurement and contracting processes, including hiring a full-time procurement coordinator, updating a procurement contracting handbook, and also in conducting trainings for staff. It was through these processes that this issue was identified. Since then, CalBRA has paused processing of F3's pending invoices until the board takes formal action to extend the term of the agreement. This was, of course, communicated to F3, and they understood the need to do so. In light of this, F3 also agreed to discount the pending invoices, so the total amount pending is approximately $74,000. In response to this development, CalBRA's procurement coordinator is conducting a comprehensive review of the status of all contracts procured on behalf of CalBRA during fiscal year fiscal years 2018, 19, and 2019, 20, to ensure that all of our contracts are up to date. We anticipate that this is an isolated case because a contract was procured prior to the current CalBRA administration being in place. The amendment before the board only modifies a provision relating to the term of the agreement. All other provisions, including hourly rates, remain the same. Lastly, since joining CalBRA last month, I have begun to evaluate and assess CalBRA's needs as a pretend self-able counsel. And one of my top priorities is to issue the RFP for new out of legal counsel services based on our current needs this spring. So I'll be returning to the board later on this fiscal year. This concludes my report, and I, along with President Menon, can answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much. With that, colleagues, any questions or comments? I did not see any from the board, but that is there any public comment for this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you so much. With that, colleagues, I will entertain a motion in a second.
So move.
I've got at the time with the move and I got Medina with a second. Medina beat you on the second, sorry. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Garyus Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Josh Elizondo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande. Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw. Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Yes.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your presentation. Next up, we have item 4.2, which is the Vice President of Engineering.
Good afternoon, President Costa and Vice President Aguinaldo, members of the board. I'm just so pleased to bring Brendan Volheim's candidacy forward to you today for consideration as our next Vice President of Engineering. Brendan has spent the last 12 years working in various levels of big and small technology companies. Most recently, he's worked as the Chief Technology Officer at, you know, a data science company, providing data insights to universities, publishing companies, and financial institutions worldwide. He's maintained a 20-person engineering team while helping the company reduce costs and reprioritize procedures. Before you know, he worked at Zynga, an online gaming company supporting millions of daily active users on their various games. In his spare time, he enjoys playing ice hockey, golfing, and camping with his family. And again, I'm just so happy to bring Brendan's candidacy forward today for your consideration and approval.
Thank you so very much. Colleagues, is there any trustee discussion on this item? Seeing that, I will ask if there's any public comment on this item.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you so much. With that, colleagues, I will entertain a motion in a second.
Move approval.
I have the movement and Bill Rawlings with a second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Garyus Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Josh Elizondo.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande. Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Los Villa Lobos.
Yes.
Motion carries, President Costa.
We'll now move on to our information and reports items. I'd like to invite Mr. Younger up to give us a report on labor market insights. I love these reports because I hear about professions I never knew existed. I'm dating myself clearly. With that, take it away.
Well, thank you very much. Good, good afternoon. I'm excited to be before you today to preview labor market insights, supporting our intention to develop two new programs here at CalBRA. One being the user experience and user interface, also known as UXUI. An expansion of our recently announced design innovation occupational cluster. And then also a project management program, which is an expansion of our existing knowledge economy occupational cluster. You recall during our March 2022 Board of Trustees study session, CalBRA introduced a workforce-driven, equity-centered community design framework for program research, selection, and development in alignment with that strategy. And prior to moving forward with development, we have committed to providing this board with a preview of our research and findings to support new program selection. So therefore, today, we'll review CalBRA's research and development phase, which consists of a comprehensive labor market information. Next slide. Just as it relates to our roadmap, providing a research overview today, comprehensive statewide careers and labor market insights as well. So our research process starts with the end in mind, right? And as we evaluate the opportunity to introduce new programs to our adult learner population, we really focus on solving for what currently does not work for people in the education as well as the employer marketplace. Our process is cyclical, starting with discovery, moving on to synthesis, and then finally with co-creation. Next slide. During discovery, we really engage strategic research partners and perform in-depth informational interviews with industry subject matter experts, managers, and incumbents. We leverage advisory councils and industry partners to validate the skills, knowledge, and experience needed to perform successfully in the role. During synthesis, we schedule follow-up interviews as needed to gain in-depth analysis of the job skills identified during the discovery phase. And finally, during co-creation, our faculty, subject matter experts, introduction instructional designers, and the curriculum committee define curriculum around services teams to find and design key services to support our students. Next slide. For illustrative purposes, we brought back the side slide in a couple of different settings, but it really highlights the filtering action through the lens of our typical learner of Brenda. As we know, Brenda has a number of responsibilities outside of just pursuing higher education, right? Single parent caregiver to a family, but also managing low-wage jobs, right? And so therefore, she looks at this opportunity of higher education in a non-traditional way. And as a institution, right, we really focus on that non-traditional element to bring forward opportunity for a Brenda, right? So she filters out things like jobs with credential and formal educational requirements, jobs with minimum pay below $32,000, and offering no-on-the-job training or career development opportunities, and jobs that are primarily just managerial, right? These are the, excuse me, inputs that we have to consider as we're developing our programs. And then this type of filtering through the lens of our adult learners informs not only our program selection strategy, but it also allows us to categorize our current and future programs into what we're calling occupational clusters to meet our student needs. Next slide. So here you'll see a listing of our current categorization or occupational clusters. We'll be focusing on two specifically today. The bottom left, the design innovation, which will house our UXUI or our user experience, user interface program. And then the top right, knowledge economy occupational cluster, which will host our project management program. Next slide. So I'd like to spend a moment just sharing market data and insights for future for our future user experience and interface program. Next slide. The user experience and user interface professionals really bridge the gap between people, design, and technology, and enable users to leverage complex technical products in a user-friendly manner. Given that consumer habits and expectations are evolving, there's a strong desire by industry to really deepen the communication-centric experiences and create innovative opportunities and appealing interfaces to really meet the consumer basis needs. So the demand for these careers is on the rise, and it is estimated by 2027, jobs in this space will grow approximately 13% with nearly 17,300 jobs added in California and lending the profession to meaningful job security. Next slide. This map really highlights the regions and counties in California that offer a number of job openings, and the darker shades really represent that higher volume of jobs. While it is important to understand kind of where the jobs are located, we also know that the opportunity does not always have to be where the jobs are located, but where there are large populations of individuals who want to be trained but do not have access to the right training opportunities. So we see this opportunity specifically for UXUI. Deep opportunities in Los Angeles, San Diego, in the Empire, as well as the Bay Area, where there is ample opportunity as well as a population to be served. Next slide. Next slide, I'm sorry. Thank you. And so as it relates to employment opportunity, there are nearly 20,000 jobs for UXUI designers in California with median salary ranges between 69,000 and 86,000. However, in the state of California, only 2,700 or so certificates are earned annually from programs that specifically train for this occupation. What does that mean? That means it's a great opportunity, right? So that's nearly a seven-to-one job posting to certificate-earning ratio right across the entire state, and nearly four-to-one ratio in focus regions. And so we really do have a great opportunity to stand up opportunities for for this population. Next slide. So as you, as you can see, there are common skills across multiple entry-level occupations with career pathways. So skills like user research and marketing and visual design are highly transferable and lead to a number of top occupations like user experience designer or interaction designer alike. Next slide. So with only 16.7% of incumbents identifying as Hispanic and 3.4% identifying as Black or African-American, CalBRA programming presents a unique opportunity to not only expose our students to emerging careers and quality jobs, but also assist with diversifying the industry, giving our unique student demographics. Next slide. So moving on to the next program we would like to develop, which is project management. This exciting program will expand the offerings in our knowledge economy occupational cluster, and will and will bring together foundational project management knowledge. Our students will gain a better understanding of the various elements of business delivery and differentiate themselves when competing for the next entry-level position in project management. Next slide. Project management is a unique career field that involves numerous skills that are highly transferable across industry and sectors. So due to increasing reliance on project-oriented strategies to meet economic demands, entry-level project managers have become an essential part of business strategic planning efforts. So project management skills such as time and cost management, planning and problem-solving are critical ensuring to ensure organizational success. And it is estimated that in the next 10 years, the project management occupation will grow nearly 10 to 15%, adding as many as 19,900 jobs in California. Next slide. So the regional outlook for project management is positive, right? The darker shades of blue indicate the higher volumes of the jobs. And we see that in Los Angeles, San Diego, in the Empire, Central Valley, Fresno, and Bay Area are really, you know, regions that have a substantial amount of opportunities that also have very large populations as well. Next slide. As it relates to employment opportunity, there are nearly 98,500 jobs for project management in California with median salary ranges between 44,000 and 73,000. However, in the state of California, only 5,600 or so certificates are earned annually and for specifically programs in this occupation. Again, nearly 17-to-1 job posting to earning ratio across the state and 10-to-1 ratio in our focus regions, again highlighting the opportunity. Next slide. And as you can see here, there are common skills across multiple entry-level occupations with career pathways within many industries. Workforce management and planning skills in industries like manufacturing or systems design can lead to careers as project management specialists or business operations assistant, for example. Next slide. So like many other occupations, diversity in the workforce is an opportunity we evaluate closely. With only 5.1% of incumbents identifying as Black or African-American, Calbright programming can expose these students to the emerging careers while also at the same time diversifying the talent pool. So this is an opportunity to ensure these entry-level project management roles serve as gateways to broader project management field where increasing levels of responsibility and opportunity may exist. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Can we take down the PowerPoint so I can see if the virtual participants have? Thank you.
So I did have a question, and I'll gotta remember it. Okay, so I do have a question, and it really goes to, if you can help me understand how you go about sort of process, this is a process, how you go about identifying these emerging jobs? And then, and what, and what, and what that team looks like? Because you mentioned the faculty, subject matter, experts. I suspect that that's not the only person who's doing this. There's a team with different skills. If you'll explain sort of what happens, who talks to who, and how does that happen?
You know, it's a great question for member Haynes. And so what I would say is it's cross-collaborative effort. It's not just a workforce function, but it's an all-institution function. And so it starts with our workforce team and the discovery and engaging with both employers, community organizations, and better understanding the labor market information based on region. So it'll start there, but it progresses with leveraging the skills in-house from learning and instruction to career services and success and to making sure that both our assigned committees and teams are cross-collaborative and leveraging the information available. So in addition to research and development, we also do the qualitative assessments and reaching out to current incumbents, subject matter experts in industry as well to take into account. And from emerging careers perspective, we leverage a lot of different tools and systems, inclusive of our statewide tools and employment development agency, the Labor Market Information Tools, but more broadly looking at regional applications that allow us to specify where the opportunity exists throughout California.
So this is, I'm just sort of talking out loud. I'm not expecting you to dive into this question. Our sister colleges, I'm certain, have partnerships as well. But I don't hear anybody, and maybe I'm not in the same, I know I'm not in the same room, about where these emerging jobs are. And, but I'm really hoping that that is sort of, it's happening. I mean, I know that places like San Diego, where there's an industry that's there, that's embedded, that didn't just happen. It's been emerging over the last 20, 30 years. That becomes an incubator. But for that map that you had where it is the Imperial Valley, the map that are sort of the light blues where it's the Central Valley, that's where the, that's where the challenges truly are. And they don't necessarily have the infrastructure, but they do have community colleges, okay? But putting that aside, they don't have the infrastructure. So given that piece, and I realize that there are fewer jobs in that area they're going for, but there are some big cities. So how do you, how do you bridge that piece of it? Because if indeed these are jobs where you don't have to move, then you do have populations that really would benefit if you could train them in a way that it ends up being more than the 240 jobs. I mean, LA is always, the LA County is always the big gorilla. But if indeed we're really about our mission relative to those areas of the state that really don't have what they need in order to thrive, what I would, okay, so I'm sort of answering my own question. Kern County Community College District is doing bang-up stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I'm hoping, while Calbright is doing this, that it's gathering partners around that. Okay.
If I may, if I may, you're absolutely right, spot on, right? So this is what President Men speaks about often, and not just encourages, but we're on the ground developing and forging those partnerships. When you talked about kind of the Central Valley, making sure that we both understand how the economies are different by region, right? But also engaging with community college partners, CBOs on the grounds, community-based organizations and others. And we're often, you know, asked to be a great convener because as a statewide community college, we have that awesome opportunity and something that we value. And our commitment is to bring folks together to produce opportunity and actually share that information so everyone's been brought along in the state and amongst our peer group as well. So I appreciate you identifying that, and that's always a top one.
So, and I will end this by saying something that's critically important. There are some regions in the state that are doing that. They have a collaboration. So San Diego's one where it's not just San Diego Community College District. There are some other subplaces where they have built that collaboration, where they're working together for the common goal. Kern is one of those as well, and you can see it in the numbers and in the data of who they're trying to get into these jobs, who's coming through their system. It would be helpful, at least as a sort of a touch point. Where is that needed in other places? You know, how, I've been in Los Rios for 23 years, and I know that there's a collaboration. I don't know how well they're doing.
Yeah.
I really don't, because, you know, talk is cheap. The reality is, are they looking at these new jobs and are they planning for them? And are they working among this conglomerate of folks on these particular things? And not just the same old, same old, that's great. But we really, and we need to figure out how to get our students into those, into those things. So I'm just talking out loud about a much broader statewide perspective, but great job.
One thing that's, I think, useful for us to realize or think about it is the historic models for incentivizing the development of workforce programs are siloed and very myopic, right? They look at industry verticals.
Yep.
And our institutions are typically organized that way as well in higher education. It's not just a California community college, say more broadly. But what's, the reason what we're doing is interesting is not just because of where we're showing up to do it, because we'll go where the populations need and require us to do. But it is also very much, you know, we get asked often, like, what's your employer engagement model? You know, what is your model for management? And the reality is, is that those are the areas of innovation that are exportable for what we do. So what we're, you know, this process that we keep bringing back to the board where we first talk about the labor market context and conditions for the application of a potential new program, and then the process of actually developing it at the next stage and gate, which involves deeper engagement with the local context or the regional context of what we're doing. Those are not necessarily just singular institutions, but as Michael mentioned, those are all the dimensions of the community, including economic development, which we didn't emphasize, but plays an important role. So we can understand, how do we actually not just isolate to a single vertical?
Yeah.
Because the local colleges actually do that extraordinarily well in many places. And we always love to hear about that, like you mentioned Kern, and that's one that I'm especially excited about. San Diego Continuing Extension has a great new president, Dr. King, who is a remarkable individual who we've met with. So all of these places are doing these exciting things in these contexts. But this evolution of an approach and a model that's population-responsive, that also then ties in new ways of growing and developing the analytic side of how we view the labor part of the economy, the market part of the economy. That's where we're innovating. And so what's really, I don't have a better word for fun about this work and exciting about this work is, when we talk about occupational clusters, it's to move us away from the typical view, which is industry ladders, right? Career ladders, sector ladders. And rather to sort of say, that's actually not the way the economy is currently organized. And then we have to look at that, both from the dimension of what the skills are that are required, but then also of this dimension of like, what is the behavior in that hiring market? What do we understand about the things that actually condition employment success? And those are the dimensions of things that we often don't get to look at and don't have methodologies for looking at because we focus maybe on a singular data point. Like, we're gonna go with high-growth jobs, full stop. We're gonna go with industry-relevant jobs, full stop. And so we're not looking at these cross-currents in the economy, which is actually the range of motion that a potential applicant can experience in the labor market.
And has skill sets.
Yes.
That they can go into even another industry because they have this grouping of skill sets.
That's right. So as we build our portfolio of available programs, we want to think about it in relation to how the economy is organized, not just the traditional mechanisms with which we have self-organized institutions at a time when our economy functioned very differently.
And so what I'm hoping that the, as we move into doing this kind of work, Calbright, that there'll be some lessons learned. Because we're talking about this ahead of the curve. And Calbright is probably positioned best, but there may be some colleges in their online offerings that can also position, and part of this is getting that word out, but it's meeting, it's meeting those jobs sort of ahead of time, that wave ahead of time, and having skilled folks to do it. That's where, in many cases, we have worked behind the curve. We've, you know, we've been doing nursing, we've been doing nursing for the last 10 years, but we were behind the curve doing that. And we, our courses were so small, 300, when you need, and there were 5,000 openings. So that's where there's some lessons to be learned on how we do this work, that's skill-based, that you can keep on adding those skills where they, folks can move as the economy moves in these different directions. So I really glad, I like that.
Thank you, and for member.
Thanks. So my question is, I mean, I have to admit, I'm always completely confused by workforce bureaucracy. Whenever in the Board of Governors, it's like eight funding streams, and there's consortia everywhere. And then we give out, you know, 30 grants to. How do you, how do you interact with all that? And is there any resentment, or is there like a welcoming process?
I think it's a great question. And so what I would say is, we take an interesting approach to that. One, understanding as we're engaging with partners, what the AICIL is, right? So what's the low-hanging fruit? Where do we have opportunity to complement the work that's currently been done in regions, right? So when we come to the table, it is a discussion about funding streams long-term because we want all of our programs to have longevity. But we don't make that the central focus. We like to see, you know, the racing concept of roles and responsibilities, who's doing what and what, right? Because there could be funding streams that exist to support a function. And so let's have that conversation, but more importantly, what is our broader outcome? And what are we here for? What are our guiding missions? And so there's always an issue, right? I'm happily, I have been an alumni of the Labor and Workforce Development Agency, and it's given me great insight into being able to parse through some of those challenges. And so I think our team being very supportive of that element. And we also have folks all across the college that have been familiar with that at the federal and state level. And so we're fortunate in that, in terms of being able to come into these discussions with not just a zero focus on funding, although it's an important element. Let's really talk about what are we trying to accomplish here and over what period of time? Not rushing into it and being really methodological, or really being precise in terms of what we're trying to accomplish.
And we'll say also that we don't just bend and react to what somebody, what a single qualitative interview might tell us. So often, there's a rush to be responsive, and the responsive rush means that we develop at an institution a bespoke program. Right? There's, we need, I don't know, I can't think of an example right now. And taking that careful intention to map out what the needs are of the region through those conversations helps us to identify what's the contribution to a region that we can make. And we are careful to be very honest when we don't think a program is appropriate for us, right? An over-specialized program that doesn't actually, you know, focus on the occupational kind of approach or strategy that we have, that's not a good fit for us, and we're honest with the folks at the table who are sorting through and trying to solve this problem. So rather than just responding to, I need an acute need for a program of 300X, we have to say, sort of, let us understand a bit more about how your economy is functioning, what your strategy for economic growth is, what areas you anticipate are the most developing and prospecting. Like, these are the conversations we're having in the Lowdi region and in that part of, outside of Stockton, outside of areas where there's nascent industries and economies that are developing, but that we won't, we won't do the specialized training in because that's not going to be a fit for us. But those, that growth in industry needs UX designers, it needs folks with marketing skills. And so those are the kinds of things that we can adapt for a region and provide in ways that, you know, that lends a lot to the, or they need IT support, or they need to the way that we think about what makes sense for us and how we approach involvement. Like, when I always say, we go and we listen first, it's not a passive listening activity, it's a tactical one. And Michael's, you know, lead engineer on that.
So they don't see us as, Calbright is a competitor, it's more of a collaborator?
I think people do, but I, you know, it just varies, right? In some places, there's so much of a need and a gap between what's happening on the ground and the, you know, and what community members have actual access to in the labor market. But I think you see in some places, there's an exciting, open-arm conversation to sort of say, let's help, you know, come to the table. We have more people involved in figuring this out. That's great. Do great conversations, and Kern's a great example of an area where we spend a lot of time. Fresno is an example where we spend a lot of time. But I think in other places, because we're all trained to see it from where we sit, right? So if it is, if I do workforce development, I have just a particular view typically of what my responsibility is directly tied to the funding stream that I'm eligible to receive. So it is, it is always refreshing for folks when we go, and we're not asking for anything except to build and cultivate an understanding of what needs are that are not just at this altitude, but at a little bit of a bigger altitude. So all these things that they have observed over time but haven't found utility action around. Like, once we can start to open up those conversations, we find the reception to be warming. So I think it's, you know, it's a process, right? It's a, we're doing things not in a way that doesn't look like other institutions have done them typically. And so once we start to explain that, and once you explain the purpose of what we do. And so once we start to explain that, and once you explain the purpose of what we do, we have found that to be a really inviting conversation for folks. They get excited about the possibilities.
And we're short term too. So we look at it also as a great opportunity, right? To, to start and then expand your horizons with our sister colleges as well, right? And so we, we oftentimes have to kind of deliver that message to help folks understand kind of the why.
Great. Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation on project management. And in the, in the future, we would consider a collaboration. Ever thought about, um, forgotten, forgotten college to offer, you know, the project management, management professional? Or any certificate, third, sorry, or certificate and project management designation? Is that like thought or any conversation that comes up?
It's, it's a great question. I appreciate that. It, it is a conversation of constant for us when we talk about our programs and working with Dr. McCarty, our Learning and Instruction Vice President. We're pursuing kind of all avenues as it relates to what certifications are most appropriate for our entry level programs. And so I think for PMP in particular, for their advanced training, but there also is certifications that are entry, it's called, really project management ready, right? And so that's the startup before you get there, right? And so that would also be an exploration in terms of how we consider associating ourselves with certifications out there. But a great question, something topical.
Thanks. With that, I'll open that to public comments.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Okay. Thank you so much for your report. Appreciate it. Next up, we have five point two reports on contracts and purchases.
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Costa, Vice President of the Department of Commerce and the Board of Trustees. There were eight contracts or amendments executed in December twenty twenty two, and a summary of purchases in December twenty twenty two, totaling four hundred sixty three thousand three hundred sixty five.
Great.
Thank you.
With that, any questions or comments to the board? Seeing none, we'll see if there's any public comment on my end.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Okay. Thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to our constituency group reports. And we have a report from the Academic Senate. With that, I will welcome Mr. Stewart.
Good afternoon, President Costa and Vice President Aguinaldo and Calbright Board members. This is the first time that Calbright Academic Senate is in front of you this calendar year. We have some reports for what we have finished last year and what we're working on this year. I will read the reports out and highlight our faculty and in no particular order. So first we'll start with the instructional faculty. Your instructional faculty has co-authored an article that was featured in the Academic Senate, the state ASCC Paul Ostrom. This is the first time that Calbright faculty has been published, so we're pretty excited about that. The faculty is also participating in the Resolutions Committee for the ASCC. So we felt that as a faculty body, we should make a presence, jump in feet first and contribute so that they know that Calbright is ready to roll up their sleeves and go to work with them. And we have been accepted and they love the work that we're doing with them. Another great accomplishment for our faculty is the collaboration with the Learning Instruction Administrators to develop and codify an improved curriculum approval and review process. And the faculties are participating in a proactive student outreach to help increase student progression through our programs. Onto the counseling faculties, or faculty, sorry. We have participated in student outreach campaign. And I'm happy to report that forty five percent of the students that were fourteen to twenty nine days of no academic activity and thirty five percent of those students who had no academic activity between thirty five and forty five days have re-engaged within the three weeks of outreach from our counseling faculty. And that's really big props to them. They put in a lot of work and called a lot of students to get that happening. Onto our programs now, our medical program, medical coding. Our peer mentoring and tutoring is progressing well. Our pilot program, which is the data analysis program, has surpassed the goal of forty one students completing the first course. And there are forty nine students moving on to the real world project section. And four students have completed the entire program within the last four months, within four months, sorry. Next, we have a report from our WF five hundred, which is the Essentials Twenty One Sentry Skills Course. Several students have submitted assignments and the responses are very thoughtful and and they demonstrate vital career readiness concepts, meaning working on their resumes, forward thinking about interviews and other things that come with completing that course. And now for the big, what we call the behemoth courses, our IT five hundred and our IT five ten. We have gone through reconstruction of those two courses. And I'm very happy to say that our, both of those courses have now launched, are up and running. We've worked through a lot of the bugs, cleaned them up. So we had another iteration upon that. But students are taking advantage of our new CPO, which is our credit for prior learning features in the programs. We've developed pre-assessments so that students can take that pre-assessment. If they score eighty percent or higher, they can move forward. So this is our first established CBE courses that we have. And because of that, we've seen students matriculate through those programs a lot faster than the original courses that we have. So unfortunately, the students had to restart the course in IT five ten and IT five hundred because of this implementation. Not anything to do with us, but the third party LMS that we were using to deliver the content with. But because of the outreach that our counseling faculty did and our instructional faculty also did, and the fact that we implemented the new labs and the new features, the students saw this as an enhanced version and an enhanced feature, and they were happy to start again because they were learning new material that was new, exciting, and had the lab features that incorporated hands-on experience for them. So that was a, a great success for our faculty. And next we have IT five twenty and IT five twenty five, which is our CRM course. And it is still going strong. It's successfully featuring content and student led exam preparation sessions. And students are matriculating through that course at a great pace. Once again, Calbright's faculty is working hard to support our students. And with the support from our VPs and our administrators, we're finding that we're now working in collaboration and we're now truly affecting the students in a positive way that we are, we're excited and be proud of. That is all that we have for the Academic Senate. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much for your report. I, I don't show that we have any other constituency group reports today.
Is there any question?
Oh, well, constituency reports, we don't. Yeah, we don't do questions during this, actually. I mean, I appreciate it, but it's actually not part of our structure. With that, we move on to public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
All right. With that, thank you, colleagues. We are adjourned. The business of the Board of Trustees is now complete. Thank you for your participation.